I'm going to call this workshop August 9th to order. Let the record reflect that Mr. Cold's absent. Mr. Walters has informed me that he is running about five to 10 minutes late due to traffic. So we will technically have four board members present. So at this point, can I have a motion for approval of our agenda?
I make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Carrie's. This brings us to some presentations. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jones.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First presentation today is, wanted to give you a brief presentation on some changes to the 2016-2017 Code of Student Conduct. Asked Ms. Gualtney to please come up and go through this presentation and answer any questions you have about changes within the code of conduct. In addition to the presentation, you also have a summary of the changes contained in the boilerplate also. Ms. Gualtney?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Briefly, the changes to the Code of Conduct for all sections except attendance are not very numerous. I met with each of the principals, the secondary principals in one group, and then the elementary principals in one group, and then we cross-changed information just to make sure everybody was in agreement with the proposed changes on the parts of the principals. Of course, we've made the appropriate changes in the administration section with contact information and phone numbers with as many people moving and switching buildings as has been taking place. The first section of the code consists of definitions, and there were, there were, there was really one change for, as far as discipline is concerned, and that is the addition of a definition of bystander. This was proposed by the high school administration, just to include those students who stand around and watch discipline events that may be taking place in the high school, that don't go on to class when they're asked to do so, that just kind of add to that event or mood of disruption that may be taking place at that time. All of the following definitions that are up on the slide after bystanders have to do with the attendance committee's recommendations, so I won't really go into detail on those because I think Katie Wojcicki is going to make that presentation to you separately with reference to attendance. There were some changes in the section that defines suspensions and makeup work that are noted there. Makeup work, it used to say that makeup work could not be completed with a day, with a suspension of 10 days or less, and, and I was advised that's really not the practice at the schools, that they are working with students and allowing students to make up the work. And so, the wording was changed just to reflect on the recommendation of the principal. And the principal certainly would look at what is the length of the suspension, what is the, the reason for the suspension before they make that kind of a recommendation. But all of the principals are very willing to work with students so that a suspension doesn't become, become a double indemnity where they're suspended and then also they can't make up the work or the instruction that they miss. The repeat offenses, and you remember, we, we had a number of those last year, those were backed down just a little bit as far as mandatory meetings and mandatory additional days of suspension. Yes, certainly, when we have students that are up with as many as 15 referrals, then there are additional actions, and they do occur before they hit 15 referrals. But you'll notice that those numbers have backed down a little bit. Five referrals was the time where there were additional days added. Now that's been increased to seven office referrals. So the additional, the days of suspension are not increased automatically with five suspensions, but rather with, I'm sorry, with five office referrals, but rather with seven office referrals. And it's one day additional. 10 referrals changed from five days additional to three days additional, and you can kind of read through those changes. Essentially, it's just kind of backed it down just a little bit. Again, this next change has to do with attendance, but in, previously in the code, there were mandatory academic sanctions and credit denied for more than a certain number of absences where there wasn't makeup time, the students didn't make up the time, and that section has been removed from the code. There was some duplication with disruptive behavior. Electronic devices appeared in a couple of places, so we just kind of cleaned up, cleaned it up a little bit and put everything that had to do with electronic devices in the section entitled electronic devices, rather than duplicating it in disruptive behavior and electronic devices. That's the same slide. There were some very minor changes to the dress code section of the code. Where previously it had said sixth grade, now we've split it elementary and secondary. I'm sorry, where it said fifth grade, so we've just made the split to elementary and secondary rather than that middle school segment. Previously, leggings and tights was included with the dress length. We've taken out that wording even when worn with leggings and tights. It's just the length of the skirt should be no shorter than the longest than your hand, it's hanging at your side at normal length. It, it sounds better in the code. Again, dispositions changed to reflect six through 12 and K through 5. I think that's it. Previously, when there was an electronic device and a student refused to turn over that electronic device, for that defiance, there was, there was automatically a five-day out-of-school suspension. That's been backed down to a two-day suspension for a student who refuses to turn over an electronic device at an adult's request. There was a minor change in fighting threats so that it captured students whose actions provoked a fight or an altercation in this, in the school building. In other words, they may not actually be involved in an altercation or a fight, but sometimes there were situations where a student's actions may have provoked a fight, and so the high school administrators felt like there needed to be some wording to capture that behavior of students whose actions provoked fights and altercations in the, at the high One minor change, there was a spot where it said a student would be expelled. That wording was changed would be recommended for expulsion because we know that only the school board expels. Finally, there were two sanctions added to issues of integrity, academic sanctions, and extracurricular sanctions. I think that's it. Any questions?
I had one, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Evil.
Could you explain again what you meant about the reason we're backing down on the amount of?
The high school, yes ma'am, the high school administrators felt like it, sometimes a student could have a bad day at the high school level, and a student sees as many as four teachers in a day at the high school. So there's sometimes, if a student's having a really bad day, they could end up with four office referrals in a day from four different teachers. So, when you start counting office referrals, and there's wording that says after five, this student should be suspended an additional five days, three days, five days, that could happen in a day or two, in, in some situations. And they just felt like it was a bit extreme, and they just wanted to back it down just a little bit. It really applies more to the secondary students. Rarely do we, do we see situations like that at the, at the lower levels.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear that we weren't letting disruptive behaviors go, and we were just being easier. So we're not being easier. I appreciate that.
We're not being easier, and it's, yeah, there are other ways we can work with students that are having those kinds of issues rather than suspending them from school. It's part of the governor's initiative to keep kids in classrooms and to look at other ways to work with behaviors rather than automatically suspending students.
I think if I could add, it's also allowing those administrators to use their professional judgment.
Exactly.
And not be tied to a number.
Oh, okay.
As much. So, if a student's, you know, something's happened at home and they're having a bad day, and they get minor disruption, you know, referrals from a couple teachers, it may just be one incident that's causing them to act like this that they can then deal with, and instead of having to count referrals and then take a prescribed action, the administrator's able to use their own professional judgment to make that call without feeling like they're not, they're not following the code of conduct.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. I just want us to be supporting our teachers and administration and not backing down on our, you know, well-maintained, well-disciplined classes. So, thank you.
As a follow-up, if I could continue this though, because I kind of had the same question. I understand the logic for multiple occurrences within a given day, but do the same criteria apply if you have a student who gets into this kind of trouble, let's say, once a week, and what I would call more of a habitual offender? And, and now for that student, the, the consequences have just been relaxed. It's going to take longer to get a, a more severe response to this action. Is there, is there a way to, is there a way to, you know, look at the, the two cases a little differently? Because I, I don't really support a reduction for, over more long-term, but I certainly understand, if you're having a bad day, you could rack up a number in one day. I don't know how you answer that.
Well, and I don't want to leave it as vague as professional judgment, but I think our administrators are trained to know that if a student's being habitually offending or disruptive in a classroom, then they may go beyond additional consequences, beyond what would have been called for based on this number. Because they're seeing a pattern of behavior, they're trying interventions, they're trying to work with parents, there's other things that they can do prior to suspensions, but eventually it gets to a point where you have to think about what's good for the other kids in the classrooms, as well as what's good for that student, and that would
Exactly.
Result naturally in a suspension. So I don't, I don't think it's lessening.
There's nothing that says they can't be suspended.
Right. It's not lessening, it's just providing some flexibility for our administrators and counselors to work with the students to make sure that they're providing the support that they can, and if needed, the consequences to correct negative behavior.
Okay. I appreciate the clarification.
Yep.
Any other questions on policy changes? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And we'll be looking for approval of the Code of Conduct at the 7 o'clock meeting. Our next presentation kind of goes hand in hand, but we've had a group, a really good committee, working on looking at student attendance and how we can improve student attendance, and what are consequences for negative attendance, and it's an issue that the schools have told us that they wrestle with, and that's not uncommon. Every school in the country, more or less, struggles with student attendance because there's lots of factors that play into that, and I think the committee did a good job of coming forward with some recommendations that we've tied into not just policy, but also to the code of conduct. Ms. Wojcicki led that committee and is here to give the presentation.
So tonight, I'm going to share with you the recommendations of our attendance committee, and I just wanted to go over and give you sort of a backdrop to piggyback on what Dr. Jones just said. Right now, in, in the nation, as well as in the Commonwealth, there are a lot of different forces at work looking at this issue of student attendance, and at the same time, within our school division, all of our schools have reported issues with students not making expected gains, individual students who haven't made expected gains, they're saying, well, some of the problem is that they are not attending regularly, and, or they're attending, you know, sort of sporadically. And when we examined it, we realized that the students are not in violation of our attendance policy. They are excused absences. And currently, our students are allowed to have numerous excused absences. So at the same time, we were attending some other workshops around the region and finding out that there is this idea of chronic absenteeism that, the, I'm sorry, I should advance the slide. There we go. Chronic absenteeism that, is this concept of students who miss 10% or more of the school year. They're considered to be chronically absent. And the reason for the absence doesn't matter. When you consider that the students have missed 10% or more of the school year, that's significant. And so they encouraged us to look at our data and to see if we had an, an issue with chronic absenteeism. And so, at the end of the school year, we reviewed our data, and we did find, Ms. Wilson, if you could click on the PCPS one. We did find that we did have a bit of an issue with chronic absenteeism. The students, we define that as being absent for more than 10% of the school year, and so it's different based on whether it's a block-scheduled class or whether they meet every day. But basically, when we examined it, we found that for full days, we had our elementary and middle school students who met that definition, we had roughly 5% of the grade level, of the students in those grade levels. When we looked at the junior high, we had roughly 43% of the students who would meet the definition, and that's full-day absences. And then at the high school, we had about 23% of the students. So obviously, this was a significant concern. I will emphasize, we do not have a truancy issue. We have a great program in place, and so students who are truant, we have supports in place, and we, we work with them. So, saying that, we then went forward and said, how are we going to address this? I also have the data for the tardies, the number of students tardy to school, and it was a significant number of students with the high school. When you examine students who are signing in tardy, chronically absent during that first portion of the day, we add another 24% of students who met that criteria. So, looking at that, we decided we needed to make some recommendations for some changes. And our recommendations are looking at it in three ways. We want it to be holistic, we want it to be consistent, and we want it to be flexible. Because those are the three areas that our committee really felt needed us to focus on. So, here are our recommendations. The first is that we align our attendance policies to be consistent with what best practices would support. And so, really what that meant was, we had a policy in place, or a procedure in place that recommended that students who were absent for, who were not present for 50% of the day were counted absent for the entire day. And in talking to some parents who, you know, sort of fell under that policy, we found that that disincentives the idea of, if you have to go into Chesterfield for an appointment, and you're going to come back a little bit late, or maybe you had to pick your child up to leave early, they would just keep them out for the whole day because it counted as an absence anyway. And so, we felt that that devalued the part of the day that they would have been present. It placed more absent, I'm sorry, more emphasis on the part that they were absent. So that just didn't seem to be consistent with our goal of trying to get the kids to be in school as much as possible. We also wanted to make sure that we allowed students to make up missed work, because, again, you heard Ms. Gualtney say, if students are absent, and then they're not allowed to make up missed assignments, then you have a double whammy. And in, in most cases, that had to do with students who had unexcused absences or who had been suspended. But again, the reason for the absence isn't taken into account in these recommendations. We also would like to remove the provision of makeup time at the secondary level, which sounds kind of counterintuitive at first, but the idea there is that we sort of sent the message that it was just the time the students spent in the seat that mattered. And so, if a student missed more than four class periods, at the end of the nine weeks, they could come in and make up the time, and that time was with a high school staff member who was available. It wasn't instructional time, per se. They weren't with their course teacher making up the specific assignments that they missed, necessarily. Sometimes they were, and sometimes they weren't. So it just sort of sent the message that the students were, we just wanted you in the building. We, we weren't really placing an emphasis on instruction. And so, we really wanted to be holistic in how our policies align. We wanted to make sure that we were sending a consistent message, and we wanted to clarify some of our existing procedures. We did find, in talking with representatives from each of the schools, that we weren't consistently applying the rules that were already in our policy that required any early dismissals or late arrivals to meet the same criteria for excused absence as full-day absences. And so, we wanted to clarify what those reasons were, and also make sure that they're consistently being applied to those tardies and those early dismissals, which I would say, right now, they're probably not being followed to the degree that we do for the absent, full-day absences. And one additional excuse we wanted to clarify with the family trip. We felt that a family trip is important, and it definitely adds to the family life, and it adds to students' experiences. However, we wanted to make sure that the building principal was aware the student was going to miss that time, and was able to review their attendance patterns and also their academic performance, and also have a plan with the family, how are we going to make up this work, either before or after, and what supports can we provide? So again, looking at being sort of holistic, and also clarifying for our community as well as for our staff what those expectations are. We also wanted to build in some flexibility, though, because, for example, at the high school, there is a procedure in place that the high school requires the students to be present a certain number of periods in order to qualify for an exam exemption. And that's a, that seems to be pretty effective at sending the message that time in class is what's valuable, and we want them to be in class with their teachers. And that's a kind of a potent incentive for students. They like not having to take that exam. So again, building in that flexibility. We then wanted to talk about, well, okay, if we're looking at all these recommendations, how can we support our students? I'm sorry, it won't, oh, there we go. And we wanted to make sure that we are holistically looking at the whole child. Why is a student frequently absent? What kinds of barriers are in place for this student to attend school? And, and that's really going to be unique to each student. So we wanted to be able to offer those supports, and we have sort of a tiered level where the first round is the teacher reaches out, the classroom teacher reaches out to the student and says, you know, we missed you, you've missed three days now, what's going on, how can we help support you? And then, we would go from there to have the counselor involved, and then the school administrator. And really, the issue is to figure out, what, what can we do as a school staff to sort of support, send the message, and make sure parents are aware that we really do need their children in school? And some examples of supports that we could provide would be, if it's a chronic health issue, do we need to look at a health plan? If the student is going to be missing school consistently in the mornings, for example, can we put some kind of homebound instruction in place, or look at a schedule change? If we are going to have struggling students, and they're missing their most important classes during the day, you know, the parents may not be aware that they are missing their intervention that was designed to sort of address their reading problem. And sometimes, the students don't want to come to school because they struggle. So it's sort of a vicious cycle. So we wanted to put those supports in place. We want to be consistent in making sure the supports are offered across all schools and grade levels, and we want to still be flexible to build in that, that approach for individual families, that not every student is going to need the same supports. And, and in some cases, we found it just might be an awareness issue. For example, many parents in kindergarten and first grade just don't seem to feel that kindergarten and first grade are as important as high school. They'll say that we plan to get our children to school in high school. And unfortunately, we found that those patterns in kindergarten and first grade become pretty ingrained by the time they get to high school. And we found that students who are absent in kindergarten and first grade are most likely to be those challenged students in the high school who are at risk for not graduating. And there's other studies that looked at the reading scores at the end of third grade being linked to chronic absenteeism in kindergarten and first grade. Students in third grade are 47% less likely to be reading on grade level if they meet the definition for chronic absenteeism in K and 1. So that's, those are our recommendations to the committee. We just want to make sure that we're providing the supports that go along with these additional sort of requirements for families. But there is more to come. The Department of Education, as I mentioned earlier, there's a lot of initiatives going on, and so I did reach out to them to see if they had a timeline on any recommendations that they might be making for school boards in Virginia, but unfortunately, that information is not available at this time. However, our committee felt so strongly that we really wanted to move forward because this is an issue that's impacting our students right now, today. So, I apologize, we may be coming back with some additional recommendations in the future, but for right now, this is, this is what our committee came up with. Thank you.
Any questions on the absenteeism presentation?
Well, I don't have a question, but I think that's fabulous, being more proactive, and, and because obviously, if you are not there, you cannot learn what you need to learn. And also, being a former kindergarten teacher, some children are, if they're missing that much, they just might not be ready for kindergarten, and might need to stay home another year and try again next year. But I, I applaud you and your committee. This is wonderful.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I, I did have one. The chart that you had up, I'm sure you have it in the data, but of the absences and the percentage that are chronic, do you know what percent are excused absences? Or is it that, that our parents call in, say, kid's not going to be in for whatever reason? Do you know roughly what percentage is?
The bulk of them. I mean, I, I did include excused and unexcused in totaling that up, but we don't have very many students who we have to follow up with truancy plans. So I'd say last year, we probably had maybe five students, division-wide, who met that criteria. So, the bulk of our students in that, and I, I can pull that together if you'd like.
Well, you, you, I'm not looking for any more data on it. I suspected that. And if I sat down and I tried to write a list of what, what constitutes an excused absence, I would imagine I could get everything from, from things I would be very sympathetic with to things that would be absolutely appalling. And personally, I, I view absenteeism not as a problem, but as a symptom of a problem. And I think it, it goes back, like I said, and a lot of times, it's something that you would be very sympathetic with if it's chronic health issues, socioeconomic issues with, with, you know, transportation, or family coverage for this and that. Absolutely, my, my heart breaks for those, but then, you know, you've got instances where, at the drop of a hat, I think parents will, will opt to not have the child go to school because, you know, something else is more important. And I don't know how you solve it, but getting a handle on the data is, is one of the first steps, so.
Right. Yeah, and we, and we did, I kind of mentioned it, but didn't spell it out specifically. For students who are absent frequently with the parent calling in sick, we are going to ask for a professional note after as few as five, as many as 10 days, depending on where they fall, and just looking at, you know, asking and requiring that note. And I think that would be a very, well, I know that would be a huge change to what our parents are used to, and that would also apply for those students who are frequently being picked up early or coming in late. So, again, you know, we're trying to get to the part where we can support you, but we need to know what the issue is.
And I sup, I support your efforts on that.
Well, and I'm glad to hear the support and the shaking of heads, because everybody sitting up here is going to get calls from parents that are upset because they've been put on professional note. Because I've had probably the three most frustrating conversations I've had with parents since I've been in Powhatan is, I, nobody can tell me when my son or child should or shouldn't go to school, and if I don't want him to go to school, when I want him to stay home and watch the granddaughter, or I want him to, he doesn't feel good, then there's nothing that anybody can do about it. Okay, that's true, but there are consequences for missing school. So, we will get contacted about this, and we will get some parents who feel like we're infringing upon their rights as parents. But the message is, is that you have control over when your child stays home, but there's such thing as an excused absence and an unexcused absence, and there are consequences for each. So, the choice is you make, just like we teach children, there are consequences for them. So, we hope that that added layer will help deter some of the, as Mr. Conca said, some of the absences that may not be as genuine and, and needed, and will encourage the kids to come to school more, and the parents to send their kids to school when there are temptations not to.
Well, and in the workforce, the consequences of me not showing up for work is, my paycheck is going to go down at the end of the month, so.
Or you may not have a paycheck.
Or you may not have a paycheck.
Exactly. That's what I was going to say. It, it does, your job, we want to teach them to be productive and responsible, and if you can't start that in kindergarten, go through your school life, how are you going to be employed successfully?
Yeah, if I get a call, I, I can't tell a parent in good conscience, well, that's okay. You know, I understand, I mean.
Well, when we have a, we tell our kids, it's your job. You know, your job is to go to school, mommy's job is to be the mom and be a school board member, daddy's job, you know, everybody has a job. And that's what I would plan on, you know, having a little.
Good response.
Yes, mhm.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wojcicki.
Thank you.
All right. Superintendent's report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item is the school board, the VSPA policies that we gave you in May. Seems like a long time ago. There were a lot of them. Many of them were language changes or code references, but wanted to see if you had any questions at this time. Again, we'll be looking for approval of these policies at the 7 o'clock meeting tonight.
Okay, any discussion on any of the policy revisions that were outlined?
I have just a couple. I keep losing my internet connection, I don't know why, but I keep getting a little message, and now it won't go through. So, I can't look at them right now. File. File KD, which was the public comment period, we have on there, I think the practice has been in the past three minutes for individuals and five minutes, I believe, for group people representing a group. And in that policy now, it's three minute and three minute. I didn't know if we wanted to keep it three and three or to still give a group, someone speaking on behalf of a group, the five.
Personally, I would, if there's a distinction, the group needs to have five as a courtesy. That's personally.
I was kind of thinking the same thing, and I know Maggie Walker does the extra couple of minutes for someone representing a group.
I think for an overall, what's, boundaries, yes, but I also feel like if someone, and I, and I think the chairperson has done that, is if they've gone over a little bit just to finish up or a kind reminder to not be real strict on, if they've taken the time to come to us and speak, speak to us about an issue, I, and there's not 20 people waiting in line, I.
I agree, and I've tried to be very generous with letting people wrap up, but I, I just don't want a hard limit that is artificially too low. If we do have to start enforcing for the occasion when we have 20 people, I would still prefer a three and five minute hard limit that I would be very generous with as time permits.
Mr. Chairman, I'd support a three and five as well. Okay. We'll go ahead and change that in the policy and look for approval with that stipulation.
I think it also relates to B D D H and then the, at the bottom, the ones that they correspond to was B D D E.
Okay.
I think so, all three of those.
We'll check those references.
Okay, thank you. And then the only other things I had was the policy J J A C, which is the concussion, the concussion policy. I just asked the question, who the, if we had a concussion management team, and Dr. Jones says we said that we do?
Yeah, it's the high school principal or an administrator at the high school, the athletic trainer, the activities director, and I think there's one or two coaches on there and maybe the school nurse as well. So it's an active committee and that's becoming more of, more of an issue and they have guidelines that they follow according to the policy.
Okay, and at all of our sports games, and I know we went over this policy at Maggie Walker also this summer, and we do have, and I know we do, but I'm just stating the question for, for public reference, we have people that are trained, medical professionals that attend our sports games to determine, use the concussion criteria.
Yes.
Okay.
And I believe all the coaches are now trained in that as well as part of their, I'm seeing nods in the audience, all the coaches are also trained in recognizing and working with concussions and that protocol also.
Okay, and then K B A R, just, I asked the question, who the FOIA officer was, and I kind of figured it was Ms. Wilson, but I think it's you.
Actually, it's Dr. Jones.
Oh, it's Dr. Jones. Hi, Dr. Jones.
Yes, I'm the FOIA officer. Ms. Wilson gets all the requests and then we, we review them together and, and if there's a simple response, we respond. If there's other steps that we need to take, then we communicate that together to the person.
Okay, and that was really, I think that was all that I had on those.
Okay, any other questions on the policies?
I did, I had three. But before I forget, Ms. Ayers, when I was on the school health and wellness committee, that's when it started being more recognized. And the athletic trainer was very proactive and was working on the concussion policy so that when the state did give it, we would be right in there, ready to go. So I feel really good that our school is so, our system is so proactive, yes. And I have heard of other people whose children have had problems out of school, hurt themselves or in recreation, and I've given them his name because he's so good at knowing what to do.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome. I, I wanted to know about G C P F, or I'm sorry, G B M A dash R. Is, is that now covered under the G B M As because the support staff grievances? That's on the second page. The suspension of staff members, the support staff employee status and the support staff probation period. It says this was because deletion of procedure for adjusting grievance, grievances for support staff, so.
Yes, ma'am, that's a new regulation and related policy that we have, and that's actually the next agenda item to talk about that because it's one that we did not give you in May, but we needed to update because we got some additional guidance from the state.
Oh, you mean in the next policies we're going to do?
Correct.
Oh, okay, okay, I didn't see that, okay. And I, I can't go by without mentioning the I H B, the class size. I, I just feel it's too high for elementary.
But those are, those are maximums and we do everything we can to keep them below the maximums, and that's just the state guidelines for maximums. We're nowhere near those numbers in almost every case in our classrooms. In fact, Dr. Thomas and I reviewed elementary numbers today and we review them weekly this time of year because we're getting a lot of kids coming and enrolling. Our numbers look good with a couple of exceptions and we're monitoring those. And if we need to make staffing adjustments, then we'll certainly do that to make sure that we have numbers that are, you know, reflective of what good practice is.
Okay, so could we maybe put something in there that says what you said that up to or, or not up to, but that, that we recognize that we want to be much lower?
That would be a board decision. I mean, this policy is really putting in the, the state maximums. The only concern.
Oh, that's the reason for the policy is just to list the state maximums.
To make sure that we have it in our, right.
Okay, I get it now. Okay, thank you. All right, and then the last one was the student records, J O. I had page six, something about, oh, it said something about junior high school on the chart and, and addition. All right, page six. All right, I'm in the wrong one. It's the second set.
Yeah, it includes, if, the chart I'm looking at on page six of J O, it includes the location of directory information, includes the junior high school and, as well as middle school. Is that what you're referring to?
Okay, I'm waiting for mine to come.
While Ms., while Ms. Emel's looking at that, just for reference, one of the things is we've gone through these policies that an unintended consequence of our new reorganization is we have lots of references to junior high, references to middle school. What I'd like to ask the board, instead of bringing back every one of those changes that we just make deletions of the words junior high, since we no longer have a junior high in the policy, we'll review each of them and if there's any change in the intent or meaning of the policy by that language change, then we'll bring that back to you. There may be a situation where we're talking about the middle school and it's whether it should be more in line with elementary practice or secondary practice. So we may bring that, that back to the board for consideration, but instances such as this one, we could just easily strike junior high and if it's okay with the board, we'd like to just go ahead and start plowing through the policies and taking out references to junior high.
Right, and that sounds like a good idea. And then what it was at eight and nine? Oh, the addition, how, on page eight and nine, same one, J and O. It, it was just very confusing to me. We can, we need the written consent of a student's parent. Such information to the extent provided by the parent's consent.
Which page are you referring to?
Page, it's, it's policy J O.
Right.
And it's page eight and nine. It's the end of the last paragraph on page eight, the last sentence there, we added an addition there. And I was confused as to.
However, the superintendent or school board may disclose that one?
Yes, uh-huh. And then it continues on page nine. So the Department of Education is not allowed to see any of our student records? I'm sorry?
This is for homeschooled students. The superintendent or school board may disclose with the written consent of the student's parent, such information to the extent provided by the parent's consent. So this is just allowing us, we collect records on the progress, academic progress of home-instructed students. And I believe this, and this language is more explicitly stating that we can share that information with the DOE as long as it is in line with what the parent's consent was that, when they signed up for homeschooling. So we, we share information with the DOE for our students based on FERPA, what we're allowed to share, grades, those types of things that are then kept confidential. This language is specifically giving us that latitude to do the same with homeschooled students because technically, they're still being educated within the state of Virginia with the Department of Education so they can collect data on how homeschooled students are doing.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I'm having some computer issues myself and so is Ms. Ayers, but.
Letting it keep logging us off.
What's the, what's, and I can't look at the policy at this point, what's the legal authority we have to release at the Department of Education? Are the parents signing a waiver of some kind permitting us to do that or?
Some of it's, some of it's within the Federal Education Rights Privacy Act. And we do have a release of student information notice that parents sign off each year that gives us, and there's directory information which is covered in this policy as well. So if parents don't want their directory information published or shared, then they can withhold that right. So there's several different instances where parents can withhold the sharing of information through notifications or other documentation at the beginning of the year.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you, board members. All right, so did we, did we cover bullet point B or are we?
We are done with that one. No, B, we still need to review.
Okay.
So three B is, these are now new policies that we've received since May that we need to update. We're giving them to you now for information. You'll have a chance to review them and then we'll ask for approval in our next meeting in August. There's summary of those. I'll go through them quickly. G B M A dash R, which is the one that Ms. Emel referenced, is a grievance procedure specifically for support staff. We need to do, include some forms in there and we got some guide, legal guidance that we needed to provide, a step to provide a grievance right to the school board if the employee didn't agree with the superintendent's recommendation. So that's included in there and you can review that information as well. The next policy is G C B E, family medical leave. This is a very complicated policy with lots of forms. We got some updated notice from V S B A. Our HR department has done a great job of developing lots of good forms that our employees are used to using, so we'd like to continue using that and continue using those. And there's some, the only revision here is the addition of a cross-reference. School meals and snacks, this was the work of the school health and advisory committee. We've added their recommendations to this revised policy. This is one we are kind of holding, waiting for that recommendation, so you can review that. Talks about healthy snacks, vending, fundraisers, those types of things are all within this policy. And then also J R C A, which is school service providers' use of student personal information. So this is a little bit related to what we were just discussing. And FERPA, this is actually like when we hire somebody to come in and work with our students, that's an outside third party, kind of gives us the guidelines and procedures we can follow for sharing student personal information with them and to make sure we're in, not violating FERPA there with those individuals or companies as well. So those are the policies that we'd like for you to review. If you have questions between now and the 23rd, feel free to call me and we'll, we'll be able to answer them for you at that time.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. This brings us to a public comment period. If there's any items that you wish to discuss or present to the board on any subject, you have a three-minute time limit if you're an individual, five-minute time limit if you represent a group. If you do approach the podium, please state your name and address for the record. And seeing no movement, I will close the public comment period. This brings us to some closed session items. Ms. Emel, can you have a motion to take us into closed session?
I recommend we enter into closed session pursuant to code 2.2-3711A1 to discuss the employment, resignation and leave of specific employees and persuade, pursuant to code 2.2-3711A2 and A4 to discuss the expulsion and school placement of specific students. Codes 2.2-3711A1, A2 and A4.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to come out of closed session?
Whereas the Powhatan County.
Ms. Emel, certification comes separate.
Somebody.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Would you read the certification, Ms. Emel?
I'd be happy to do that, Mr. Chairman. Whereas the Powhatan County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Powhatan School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies. And only public business matters, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed or considered.
Aye.
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 All right, okay, we're back in open session. We have a couple of agenda items that we are going to defer our follow-up and discussion of the school board retreat. We're going to defer that to the regular meeting so that we can adjourn this meeting and begin the regular meeting. Apologize for being late. So with that, I'm going to take a motion for adjourning the workshop.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned in our workshop. Give us a few seconds to switch over to the regular meeting agenda.